I feel kinda bad for that one, though. He's not a good speaker.
Oh, uh, Rob.
God, it's terrible.
Okay, Danny, we're good to go.
All right. Everybody ready to roll? You good? No, I'm.
You're the boss.
Uh, yeah. All right. Call the meeting to order with pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Slight echo there. All right. Uh, is there any public comment today? If not, looking for, uh, board meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the agenda.
Moved by Steve.
Second by Paul.
Second by Paul. Any questions?
We had, we had one addition. It was a drone donation from Kingston Lions to go on consent agenda.
All right. Thanks, Andrew.
And I'll move it with a change or addition.
I'll second it with that. Change or addition.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on. Consent agenda. Andrew.
Yes, and today's consent agenda, we have approval of the March nineteenth board meeting minutes. Approval of the health human services county and hospital accounts payable. Approval of the allowance of three hundred dollar cash till in the land use office. Approval of the Darwin Rod and Gun Club one to four day temporary onsite liquor license. Approval of twenty twenty four additional watercraft inspection services agreement for Lake Coronas. Approval of the twenty twenty four A I S watercraft inspections and decontamination contract. Approval of the twenty twenty four Safe Assure Service Agreement. And as mentioned before, uh, don't approval of a donation from the Kingston Lions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the donation and a thank you to them for that donation.
Absolutely. All right. Moved by Paul. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any other questions?
Uh, I just maybe for Paul or Julie on the twenty twenty four A S watercraft inspection and decontamination service agreement. Has that been funded pretty good?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I know that always varies on
Yep.
different funding.
I had a, I had a similar question. I, I contacted Andrew about that extra eight thousand dollars for Coronas 'cause I wanted to know, was that coming out of our county funds or was it the A I S fund?
Okay.
It is the A I S funds.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kinda curious how that was. How the funding was going there yet. Good. That's it.
All right. Any other questions? With that said, let's have a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on. Karen White. Drug court supervised.
Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Very good.
Good morning.
I am not sure how to advance my.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. All of you know me. My name is Karen White. I've been the drug court coordinator for the last ten years here in the Eighth Judicial District. I'm just gonna give you again a little update and background. It's been a while since we, um, I have been in front of you. So, uh, just as a district, we have been in operation now. We'll be celebrating our ten year anniversary in July of this year. We've had eighty two people graduate the program. Um, of those eighty two that have graduated, sixty six have not been convicted of a new criminal activity, gross misdemeanor or greater. Um, you know, we exclude things as petty misdemeanors, as speeding and things like that because you know, we all might speed a little bit once in a while, so, um, and then sixty two percent.
I don't know what she's talking about.
Not Danny.
Most of this board.
Bren Belkami would argue with me.
Um, out of those eighty two, sixty two percent have had no new, no new, no known relapses. Um, because we do a fifty hour annual volunteer project in the community, that has resulted in forty one thousand dollars given back in community work service. Um, there are a lot of our volunteers that go on to do additional hours. Um, but we're tracking the basic fifty that they're required of our program. And we've had six active CHIPS cases closed since then. I don't know if I can advance it over here. Can you?
You can. If you just, you can use either the arrow buttons, you can use spacebar, you can use enter, you can, yeah.
Oh, now how do I go back? Okay, thanks. I got it. I'm gonna focus specifically on the Candy Meeker County Central Assignment Area. We've had forty graduates since two thousand and sixteen. I know we started our program in two thousand and fourteen, but really it takes almost two years to get through our program. So really, our first graduate wasn't until two thousand and sixteen. In the Meeker Candy area, we're actually doing a little better. We had seventy percent have not been convicted of a new crime, misdemeanor or greater, and sixty percent have had no new relapses. Um, again, with the community work service and the volunteer projects we do, um, that's resulted in about a twenty three thousand dollar addition to, uh, the community. We had five out of the six active CHIPS cases were in Meeker Candy. And then we've had numerous people obtain their GED and driver's license, so. Some of the highlights, um, just in the last two thousand and twenty three year calendar year, we had eight graduates in two thousand and twenty three. That's probably the most we've had. Um, we've also added a COG skills program. I'm sure the Department of Corrections has spoken to you about the decision points training. Um, it was addressing criminal thinking, and we thought that was a really good, um, bonus to add to our program. So now it is a requirement to graduate from our treatment court program. We've also done some, um, progress in increasing our incentive programs, um, and receiving donations from local food businesses. Um, in August of twenty three, we celebrated Drug Court Day. That's something we do annually. We had over seventy five people in attendance. Um, it was probably the hottest day on record. As Erin can attest to. Um, they actually were so generous at Robbins Island. They let us use the, um, air conditioned building that I did, which normally they don't because it's right next to the pool area. So that was very nice of them. Um, we've also increased some of our, um, recovery, what we call recovery capital in the, in the district. We did a housing presentation in October. Um, we did a mandatory, um, tour of Ridgewater for all the participants in November of two thousand and twenty three. And actually, I was walking out of that tour and ran into our, one of our former graduates who's gonna graduate this May in with electric, with an electrician's degree. Um, so he was super excited and I was glad to run into him and see that he is still doing well. And then November, we had a holiday gathering, um, also. Um, for the team aspect, we again had national present, presenters on two onsite for two different occasions. Again, just always trying to be better at best practices and what the research says will give us our best bang for our buck and lower our recidivism rates. Uh, and then we participated in the Candy Head County Bender Fair and we attended the state conference. In two thousand and twenty four, we anticipate at least five more graduations, as you can tell because I'm here again today. Uh, we'll again participate in the Candy High County Bender Fair. May of two thousand and twenty four, this will be the next, um, group activity we'll be doing with the participants. It's participating in Capitol Day. A lot of our participants have not had that experience to the government, out government. And so every year, well, pre-COVID, we did every year did, uh, team, uh, Drug Court Day at the Capitol. And so we'll be joining the rest of the state to, um, celebrate Treatment Court and the, the progress and the research, um, the successes we've had. Again, we'll be celebrating our tenure this July. Um, there'll be more anticipated, uh, participant events to be announced. June of two thousand and twenty four is my anticipated start date, or it was my anticipated start date to begin the recidivism study. I think last time, um, I was in front of you, we were developing that relationship with the University of Minnesota Morris to do some additional studies. And always trying to evaluate the program and make it better. But why we are here today, um, is to celebrate yet another graduation. Um, I have brought Erin with me and I'll let her speak, um, for herself here. But I just wanted to kinda give you the where we're at now and where we started. So Erin, why don't you just tell a little bit about, about your progress and, and your experience in Treatment Court?
Well, I'm Erin and I guess my experience has been very up and down. I didn't wanna do it. It felt very long. But I've never met anyone else who has had so much faith in me and did not give up on me and I mean, besides my parents, but I mean, that's what they're supposed to do.
Usually, right?
So I mean, you know, hearing everyone on the Drug Court team, you know, after I had had my relapse, before I got sober. I didn't get judged. I didn't get shamed. I didn't get looked down on. And it just, it's something to be proud of to be able to go through this and graduate and have everyone support you.
As you can see, Erin's been with us, uh, just over two years now. She's excited to graduate, I'm sure. Um, and when she entered our program, you know, um, wasn't your highlight of your life, right? And you'll, you'll admit that. Um, and she'd been, she'd been in the system for a long time and had a long substance use history. And I'm just so proud of the, the progress she's made. Um, you can see that she, she has won her appeal. She is so willing to give back. And now she's employed locally at Wings to try to help other youth coming up in this, in the program. She has completed four. She'll, she'll get her GED here this next week or two. We're super hopeful. She's, she's got three tests done already. She's got this, like. And I think again, you know, we're always looking at some of the financial aspects 'cause we're a program that's been often called into question as its expense. And I have not, I did not get an estimate response on the cost savings. But again, Erin's a testimony to the program in regards to the, just being able to gain custody of her child. And she has her child and she successfully completed that CHIPS program in, in seven months. Just doing, she is just doing phenomenal. And she has over six hundred and fifty days of variety. So I would like to take a moment to invite everybody to Erin's graduation. It'll be held here on five fifteen of two thousand and twenty four at three thirty. We will do Drug Court first like we typically do and then have a small ceremony. So. Uh, and then I have one last announcement that's not really in the PowerPoint. Tomorrow is my last day with the Eighth Judicial District Treatment Court. Um, I have taken a new position with the state judicial branch. And I wanted to just thank everybody for their opportunity to work with you. It's been a pleasure just starting this program and getting it off the ground here in Meeker County and all the support that you have given the program. So I just wanna take the opportunity to say thank you for that, so. Really all we have.
Congratulations to both of you ladies. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Erin, do you enjoy working out at Wings?
It's, it's got its moments, but I mean, last week was very stressful. But they can just turn around and say one thing and it just makes it worth it. So I, I really enjoy it there.
Yeah, I was out and visited there once and that's why I had to ask if you enjoyed your work or not while you were there.
It's, it's got its moments.
Erin seems to think she wasn't that bad. She was. So I think.
I, I can relate to that.
But, but the, the, there were some moments that Erin prior to coming into the program, probably.
Yeah, when I was an adult, not.
So anyway, yes, I think, I think she's such, it's such a good fit for her to give back, you know, to the community 'cause she has had those experiences.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And especially on the fifteenth. I wrote it on my calendar and I'm gonna try and get there.
That's what I did. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Greg Schultz. See if you can be as uplifting as that now, Greg, huh? Yeah.
All right, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. Got a couple items this morning. First one up's gonna be, uh, I U P for Concrete Ready Mix Plant, Forest City Township. This is the company that's, um, Dwayne Miller owns the property. He's gonna be leasing it to Albany Ready Mix. Jeff Kostroba is the owner of Albany Ready Mix and this is for a kind of a mobile ready mix plant to start out with. He's gonna bring tanks down. Couple hoppers, um, to start this ready mix plant, out to dig a well in the lower southwest corner of that property you're seeing up there is where it's gonna be located. The operation will be done by about seven employees. They'll, they'll have a, they'll house about six trucks out of the location. Uh, they'll be making roughly twenty five to thirty trips a day out of those six trucks, or four to five trips a day is what they're anticipating. Hours of operation are gonna be seven to five P M. The conditions, we gave another half hour for shutdown. So we have the condition seventy on to five thirty, but in reality, they'll be done mixing the concrete by five P M every day as I told us, so. And then Saturday's gonna be open from seven to twelve P M. The operation's gonna be roughly running from March through November, is what they anticipate.
Is there, uh, CASA fourteen, do we have an agreement, you know, for truck traffic or how?
We reviewed it to consider warrants as far as turn lanes, things like that. It doesn't approach what I'd call warrant limits just by requiring turn lane, turn lanes. They will need to get an entrance permit to modify the entrance to a commercial access.
I was just, I mean, as far as, do we require a, a bond or something on the roadway as far as weight on the road and return it to pre-existing conditions? You know, I mean, if they damage the road with the.
While they're building the site?
You, well, 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 it's in use. I mean, a lot of times like the township, if they're gonna use one of our roads.
We don't. I, I've never done that. As long as, I mean, they need to respect the legal load limit of the road.
Okay.
But if they stay axle out and they're legal, we don't have anything special required.
Okay.
We have a part of the conditions that if it's determined that that truck traffic from that location is, uh, is damaging county state fourteen, that they're gonna have to participate in the road maintenance.
Yeah.
We have that condition five, so.
Okay.
Caveat. Left him alone there on that, so.
I did have a call from one of the folks that lives up in that area, uh, yesterday, concerned about the number of trips, but I called Greg and Greg reassured me and I was able to call her back and, and speak with her and assure her of what was going on. So I think that appeased some of that question there.
All right. Any other questions about that? Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve an interim use permit. Application number one, six, three, four, two, to operate a concrete ready mix plant within the A one agricultural preservation district in part of the southwest one quarter of the southwest one quarter section thirteen, township one twenty, range thirty, and Forest City Township with conditions.
All right. Motion by Paul. Looking for a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Steve. Any further questions? With that, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to Whispering Hills.
Next item I got is rezoning and preliminary plat for Whispering Hills, which is located just north of the city limits, as you know, it's a Dassel there. Purple, a purple outline is the city of Dassel. This is just gonna be on the outskirts of that. It's gonna be five lots. So the first item would be the rezone from A one to R two. That'd be the first item up and then after that, then we'd go for the preliminary plat, um, of the five lots. Lots ranging signs anywhere from one point three eight acres, four point four acres, five point eight seven acres, one point six two acres and one point three nine acres. Access will be, uh, located off of, maybe two accesses off of two hundred and fortieth street for four of the lots and one access off of county state four. Lot number five.
Okay. Any questions on that? Or is we're looking for a motion rezone?
Mr. Chair, do you want one motion or two? Um, or should we combine those two separate into one, or do they have to be individual?
You can combine them in one.
I would.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'd recommend just combining them in one.
All right. I'll just read it all. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Move to approve a rezoning application, one, six, three, four, three, to change parcel zero, seven, zero, four, one, nine, zero, one, zero, from A one agriculture preservation district to R two rural residential district. This rezone is to allow for the development of a five lot plan in section twenty seven township one nineteen, range twenty nine in Dassel Township. Also move to approve a preliminary plat application, one, six, three, four, four, for a five lot plat of Whispering Hills. The lots are located in northeast quarter and the northwest quarter of section twenty seven township nineteen, range twenty nine in Dassel Township.
All right. Long motion made by Steve. Looking for a short second.
Mr. Chair, I will second that.
Paul beat you to that one, Julie, so we got a second. Any further?
Well done, Steve.
Any further questions on that? Looking for the roll call vote?
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Moving on. Phil, come on down.
Good morning.
Morning.
Phil's Public Works Director. I think I have three items for consideration this morning. Uh, the first one is to consider a resolution regarding bridge replacement priority list. Um, there was a copy of the resolution in your packet. Basically, what that is, is a list of bridges that either meet the threshold of replacement right now or are getting close to that point. Of those, a handful of them, like the Banana Bridge and five ninety second, um, is ready for construction this year. And then the CASA thirty four North Fork Bridge is gonna be either two thousand and twenty five or two thousand and twenty six. The rest are in kind of long-term planning, um, stages where we try and gather external funding and things like that. So we require updating this resolution periodically, so that's why I'm here today.
Mr. Chair?
Your bet.
None of these are critical, that we, we jeopardize anybody's safety with them?
I would say the Banana Bridge is getting to that point. It's a timber structure with some failures out on the edge of the bridge. Um, I, I don't think it's pending collapse or anything like that, but we did have to derate that substantially. And that one kinda jumped up, I'd say, two or three years ago because of that finding.
And do you have any projection on that one now?
For timeline?
Yeah.
Um, final plans are at the state right now, getting final approvals from the structural office, and then we can look, start looking for contractors. I'm hopeful it'll be a two thousand and twenty four project. But, you know, we need to start first half of the summer to get it done this year.
Yep. Yep, that'll be here pretty quick.
I, I know bridges in general have been tough 'cause our bridge consultants are all very busy. I think that one's been in design for about two years.
Yep.
All right. Any other, uh, questions for?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Julie.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a resolution regarding the bridge replacement priority list.
All right. Motion made by Julie. Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Steve. Any further questions? And this is a resolution, so roll call again.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on. Pavement markings.
Uh, second item for you is to consider awarding our twenty twenty four seasonal pavement markings to Campco of Dassel. Um, a little bit about this one, if you look at the estimate, we'd estimated, or we had budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for this project. Coming in about half of that for the actual work. That's partially, it's not 'cause prices are going down, it's because our program shrunk. We have some federal pavement marking that's gonna be coming up. I think we're opening bids in a week or two. So that's really supplementing our seasonal program here. Um, bids looked good. Prices are much higher than they were a few years ago, but I think that's the new reality for paint, about double where we were at a couple of years ago.
But it's still a ten percent per gallon cost reduction according, decrease from twenty twenty three prices you have written in there. So.
After a hundred percent increase, yeah.
Feels like you're getting a deal.
Yeah. Felt like it until you said a hundred.
Mr. Chair, move to approve, move to award the twenty twenty four Meeker County pavement marking contract to Campco of Dassel, Minnesota for an estimated total cost of seventy two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirty eight cents.
Motion made by Commissioner Johnson. Looking for a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any further questions? With that, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to chip seal.
Uh, last item I have is to consider awarding our chip seal contract to Aztec Corp of St. Cloud. Um, similar to what I talked about with the pavement markings, you'll see we budgeted quite a bit more than we're actually completing. That's mainly because of costs. Cost per mile of chip seal has done very similar to what pavement markings have. So traditionally, we used to target our new pavements to protect them and some of our heavier crack seal and patching routes to chip seal. This year, we're only chip sealing our new pavements just 'cause our cost per mile is getting to that point where we feel there's less value in covering up some of our crack seal and patching projects.
All right. Any other questions then?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to award the twenty twenty four chip seal contract to Aztec of St. Cloud for an estimated total of three hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred cents.
All right. Motion by Steve.
Mr. Chair, I will second that motion.
Second by Paul. Any further questions?
I did have a question, just as long as it's up here. County state aid number fourteen is the road where the concrete business is, is anticipating coming, correct?
The, the north piece. This is for the south piece. So this is south of Highway twelve.
I was wondering if there would be any difficulties with, with any of that, Phil?
We don't expect there to be 'cause we won't do any work north of Highway twelve and that approach is gonna be north of Highway twelve in the northern piece of fourteen.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Any other questions? With that, we'll, we, uh, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion carries. At this point, we'll recess the county board and convene as the county ditch authority.
So the first thing we have on here is the approval of the transfer of funds from the ditch fund to the revenue fund to the retired ditch loans. Uh, I believe there was eighty three thousand dollars in ditch loans that were getting repaid. Uh, and one thousand, three hundred and five dollars of interest. The, the full description of those, uh, loans and the different programs are included in the packet.
I think we should feel fortunate. Grand total of our outstanding loans, two twenty seven?
Yeah, that's, we're definitely doing.
After what we heard last Friday, I think we're really good.
Two, two twenty seven and a hundred and thirty seven of that is just from J D fifty two.
I know.
So our, the county systems are, are relatively small portion of the, the overall.
Yep.
Yeah, that J D fifty two started out three years ago, what, two?
No, no, no. Six.
Oh, yeah, six.
Six fifty, six seventy.
So that's really come down fast, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve transferring of funds from ditch fund to revenue fund to retired loans for county seven, twenty six, thirty five, thirty six, forty one, forty four, forty nine, and joint ditches eleven, fourteen, and eighteen in the amount of eighty three thousand plus interest of thirteen hundred, five dollars and thirteen cents.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Motion by Steve.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any other questions on the loan? With that, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brettison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
And yes. All right. With that?
What I get for grabbing my cup?
I know. Inopportune time.
She was watching too.
She's been planning this the whole time.
Who's gonna, who's gonna?
Who's, who's my victim? All right. With that said, motion carries. Next up, Mac. You have the floor.
Mac Lowken, Meeker County Ditch Inspector?
Mac Low can be your county ditch inspector. How's everybody doing today?
Good, doing good.
Hi Mac.
Hi there. So I would uh, I would like to make a motion to move to approve the quote from Weetrick Excavating for nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for tree removal on county ditch eighteen. And Andrew, do you have the, there we go. So county ditch eighteen is just south of Highway seven. Um, you're coming into um by Corvusso down there. And then it is um west of six hundredth Avenue. This is a project that we did tree removal on in the past and this would be the last part to finish up that project on that system. So we had uh sent out for quotes for um written down, how many was it? Fifteen contractors and only two responded. Um, but that uh, that is what it came out to, so.
All right.
Mister Chair, move to approve the quote from Walish Excavating for nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for tree removal on county ditch eighteen.
All right, motion by Paul?
I'll second.
I'll second that for you.
All right, we'll give that one to Julie, it was a tie. We'll give that one to Julie. Any further questions?
Didn't feel like a tie.
Hey, I didn't think so. Boy, I hope he's never um flag man at a race I'm running.
With the sarcastic market said, let's look for a roll call.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes, all right. Motion carries, moving on to county ditch twenty six.
So I'd like to um make a motion to move to approve the quote from Weber Multi Services for thirty four thousand four hundred and forty dollars for tree removal on county ditch twenty six. Um, this one has been a a big project.
Let's just flip them.
Um, and I sent out four quotes from eight contractors and four of them responded. Um, Weetrick Excavating came in at ninety seven thousand dollars. M S B came in at seventy thousand dollars and Big Bar Tree Taming came in at sixty two thousand. And then Weber Multi Services for thirty four thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And all this work is west of Highway four. Down by Walsh's property and that kind of down by Tom Walsh, if you guys know who he is.
When I looked at this yesterday, Mac, it just caught my eye that twenty eight thousand dollars between the very bottom bidder and the next one up, that seemed like a big span.
It is, yep. So, it's actually interesting, I was talking to this specific contractor in person and he said that he usually comes in lower because he has all this equipment and he gets in and gets out way faster than other people. Um, so, a lot of guys will go on with chainsaw and skid loaders and, you know, backhoes and take all this stuff out, but he's got forestry equipment, like feather bunchers and log skidders and everything like that. So he would actually come in and get the job done far quicker and actually in very quality work. Um, so I was very happy to see his quote at what it was. Um, so I'm I'm very confident that he would do a great job, so.
Have we used him before?
Are we?
Yeah, we.
Are we discussing, um, I'm looking on my screen here, are we discussing now Mac ditch number twenty five?
No, I jumped ahead to twenty six.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I I was on the wrong one, okay.
No, actually I was, but we'll move on.
Oh, okay though.
Yeah, he's working on county ditch fifteen right now.
Okay. So we have experience there. All right, Mister Chair, I would move to approve the quote from Weber Multi Services for thirty four thousand four hundred and forty dollars for tree removal on county ditch twenty six.
Okay, motion made by Steve.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any further questions? All right, roll call vote on twenty six.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes, motion carries and now we'll go back to twenty five.
Yep, this one's county ditch twenty five, so this is up by um County Road twenty seven east of Kingston. Um, up in Kingston Township there. Um, so I would pick a motion to move to approve the quote from Weetrick Excavating for fifteen thousand two hundred for tree removal on county ditch twenty five. This is also another one of the projects I'm trying to wrap up. Um, our previous inspector had tree removal and cleanings done on this system and this would be the last section to do, so. And then I had uh quotes sent out to fifteen contractors and three of them responded. Um, Dustin Hoppen Construction came at twenty thousand six hundred. Weber Multi Services at Multi Services at twenty thousand four hundred and sixty. And Weetrick Excavating at fifteen thousand two hundred. So those are pretty competitive. Yeah, both of those are good.
Okay, good deal.
Mister Chair, move to approve the quote from Weeris Excavating for fifteen thousand two hundred dollars for tree removal on county ditch twenty five.
Motion made by Paul.
I'll second that.
Given the tie to Steve this time? Second by Steve. Any further questions?
I just, I find it ironic that uh just the the quote we just approved before uh with Rich Excavating was the highest by far and then, you know, that's when they inverted things, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Phil and I were talking about that before the meeting, it's funny to see different bids for different types of jobs and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they won the first one too.
Yep, it's kinda goofy.
Yep.
I suppose it's dependent on on the type of equipment that they need to use. I, you know, in the past, we've talked about these swamp pads that they have to use and and I suppose all of that plays into their quote, Mac?
Yep, yep. Absolutely, and the size of the job for sure, because some guys who are bigger don't wanna come do these little jobs, you know, and load up all their big equipment and.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other further questions? All right, as well, a roll call vote on ditch number twenty five.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mac.
Thanks, Mac.
Well now, adjourn the county ditch authority and reconvene as a county board and Andrew, do you have anything for us today?
Uh, just a couple of quick things for you. First off, uh, as I discussed at a previous meeting, uh, our wellness committee has kicked things off and they are starting with a a kickoff event that's um been ongoing at at you know each of our different buildings. Tomorrow, they will be here at the courthouse hosting a yogurt bar at eight o'clock in the morning if you're interested and would like to enjoy a little bit of yogurt and meet the folks who are on the committee, we'd love to have you. Um, and then also the remodel project continues to move along well. Uh, we met to discuss furniture for the next phase and one of those things is um, you know, chairs for the dais in the boardroom and so they're gonna be coming with a couple of options for you to sit in and consider at a future meeting, so be prepared to sit. That concludes my report.
Practice sitting.
Practice sitting.
Yes, yes.
I thought Beth said she wanted to keep her chair because she likes it.
Maybe she could take it home.
Well, we can always give her that option. We'll have her sit. So, okay, any questions for Andrew and any of that? Or anything? All right.
Got nothing.
We'll move on to uh commissioner committee update.
I'll go.
All right, Steve us.
Uh, let's see here, uh, oh, we had the uh, we met with DOC here on the twenty first um here in the boardroom with Brandy, the sheriff, myself, Andrew and Department of Corrections um to discuss kind of our, some of the um, what do I say? Some of the issues that uh that we have difficulty navigating through or some just kind of a meeting to discuss the different ways of moving forward. Um, we met again the next day via Zoom with the DOC and uh kinda working on on some things there. And the judge, actually Judge Beckman was uh in attendance too and and uh just discussed the different things that we can do to make the 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 service agreement, I would say, between the two parties a little more uh amicable, if you will. So, and then on the twenty seventh, um, I had the emergency services board. Um, talked a little bit in emergency services board was the county G I S and I T working together uh with the sheriff's department on uh on next, or text to nine one one and some of the challenges there. Um, also cybersecurity threats to um our dispatch centers. Um, they've had five in uh cases just recently where dispatch centers have been uh attempted to be compromised. Um, and so that's a a rising threat, if you will, something that's been um, uh, up up and coming, so that's up there, kinda got there um on our radar pretty high. Um, the other thing we did on the twenty ninth, we had a joint, me and Paul attended the, and Barb and Phil and Mac, the joint McLeod, DeSibley, Ranville, Meeker uh ditch meeting in Glencoe. Um, I think everything went well, the good discussion and well-run meeting. Um, I'm trying to think, there's nothing real significant that came out of it, just kinda shared a lot of ideas back and forth between the counties on how they assess ditches and and uh some of the fees and recovery of fees and stuff like that, just to kinda round table sharing of maybe there's ways we can do little things better with each county, so that was pretty much covers that. Um, and then yesterday we had M R C Zoom, um the the biggest thing there, emergency services, uh, one of the big things, the governor's preliminary budget is about I've I haven't got a couple different numbers here, but somewhere in that twelve to sixteen million in the in his budget and uh the request was either anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty three million. Um, and that has a lot, that was the one that was gonna address a lot of the uh local ambulance service issues and and uh E M T issues, um, so that one has fallen short. Also talked a lot about the Tyler bill, the tax for- forfeiture piece and some of the changes there and um basically to keep people in their home and give them a better opportunity or a different opportunity, I would say um, uh, to pay off any debt and back taxes and stuff like that. Uh, drainage registry portal, that's something that the drainage work group has been keeping an eye on and uh that has been, actually has been pretty quiet as of now, but that's something that they they keep an eye on, so there has been no movement on that either, which is a good thing, so. And on the Negro City Care last night, because we got canceled from the snowstorm a week ago, got pushed back. Um, not just uh, everything's going quite well over there, they're looking at possibly getting a van or a vehicle, that was something they're gonna, they got some grants where they could get a vehicle and I told them to check with Veteran Services kinda to run it in that same, um, kinda the same as the Vets Council does. I I told them there's some, there's some uh similarities between the two programs that give them an idea how to manage the cost and and they're just kinda throwing it out there right now to see if it's a feasible um request, so. That is about it, all we got.
Uh, Steve on the DOC, what's our contract for with them? When is it up?
We don't have a contract.
We don't have a contract, it's just, okay, okay?
Day by day.
Day by day, all right. It's good to know. All right, moving on, Paul?
Well, we had a map meeting and and um Andrew was in attendance with me for a portion of that. I thought it was a good robust discussion about how to uh increase participation in the scavenger hunt. And um a lot of ideas bouncing around in there that day, um, and uh that's coming up not too far in the future here, we'll be making the full full mailing. Uh, I gotta ask you, Andrew, did they get that phone situation for their website figured out?
I haven't heard.
Okay. Um, then I had a full joint powers board meeting um for C P T. Uh, the gist of this one, we're taking a look at the bylaws. Um, Stevens County uh no longer wants to be our fiscal host. Um, we just recently hired someone from their treasurer auditor's office and kinda put them in a position of being very short there. And so, uh, we gotta change the bylaws in order to not have a fiscal host, so we're gonna go through that and as long as we're working the bylaws, we're gonna tweak some other things, so we'll be voting on that. We'll have the first reading in April and then we'll vote in May because it does take two meetings uh to change our bylaws there.
Can I ask, um, how do you operate without a fiscal host or?
We'll, we'll do it in-house. We'll do it in-house because funny thing is, the person we hired from Stevens County, guess what they were doing?
They were doing.
They were doing a lot of our stuff right there at the county, so um, and you know what, it's, it was one of those things, we're moving invoices down to them, back and forth and uh in houses.
Is it one of, one of them deals where it was set up, it was a great idea when it was set up and you outgrew the program?
Yeah, the only thing we may need to have a physi- a fiscal host in name only for is some of the benefit packages um that our employees have run through Stevens County. Um, and so we're checking into that uh to see it's, it's more the, like the Aflac, the dental, the division, vision insurance, those. Um, you have to have a fiscal host to to make it work, so we may be using them just in name for that portion of it. Uh, then we had the Pro Works annual meeting, um, and uh each year we give out a Daniels, it's what's called the Danielson Award. Uh, this year's recipient was Dick Lutz. He volunteers, he comes in once a Wednesday, brings cookies for all those folks and um volunteers his help there. And so it was really nice to um to meet him and um have a chance to visit a little bit. He used to run the theater here in town, or owned the theater and the drive-in theater at one time here in town, so his family did, so. Very special individual because he didn't want the award, he says, these people give me more than I get, you know? He said, it's really a pleasure to do this. That was kinda good. Um, then yeah, Steve and I were at the ditch meeting last Friday. You know, really nothing did come out. Doug Kruger uh was re-elected as the chair, Randy Kramer was re-elected as, or elected as the uh vice chair. Um, I would say carefully, but I will say it, I think we are really in good position with our ditches uh compared to some of the situations in the other counties. Uh, Wright County.
Yeah, I forgot Wright was there too.
Yeah, and it just seems like they're coming up to speed and, you know.
Well, and a lot more people, you know, a lot more densely populated areas, so when you have ditches there, it just affects. You got more, more people.
Feedback, right?
Positive.
Yeah.
And then the M R C meeting yesterday, and I don't know if you mentioned this to us or not, Andrew, but um on that um foreclosures, they're looking at a six-year look back. So, I don't, I don't know if that's, Paul McDonald kinda gave us an update on that and he said that's gonna be a proposed six-year look back.
Yeah, so there's, a- as was mentioned, um, at the meeting yesterday, there's, there's two tracks, there's two issues that are being dealt with. One is the policy, the rewrite of the state's tax uh forfeiture law. Uh, and then the other is to address um class action lawsuit that's been filed by individuals who've had, you know, their properties um forfeited over the past several years. That is the one where they're looking at the look back.
Yep.
Um, which at at this time, the settlement agreement, the tentative settlement agreement includes a six-year look back. Um, all of the auditors and treasures across the state have provided data to um, you know, A M C and then ultimately the Attorney General's Office who've been working on this. And uh so that's where they come up with the the total estimated um liability of a hundred and nine million dollars. The state um has a bill going through the legislature that would fund that hundred and nine million dollars. Though my understanding is there's a portion that would get clawed back from the counties through the sale of forfeited properties. So a certain portion of the sale of the forfeits going forward or maybe there might be a requirement that we sell certain properties that we're holding on to from the past six years. The pro- a portion of those proceeds would go to the state to help fund this hundred and nine million dollars. So it's not going to be the state coming to us and saying, my understanding is it's not gonna be the state coming to us and saying, Meeker County, you owe X number of dollars, cut us a check out of your general fund. It would be a source from something else.
And, you know, of course, we've only sat here for three years and some odd months. I don't think in that three years, have we done two?
Yes, that, that's correct. What we, um, our estimated total liability is about a half a million. Yes, that's that's correct. What we um our estimated total liability is about a half a million dollars. Um in in part, there's a couple of sales that, you know, came in fairly robustly, um and and that's where that comes from, so.
Yeah, I can only think of a couple that have been positive.
Correct, yes. I mean, the vast majority, it's not just us, it's across the state, the vast majority are are net losers
Yes.
for counties. Um but there are the ones that do come out ahead and that's where the issue here is.
Alright, thanks, Paul. Julie?
Okay, here we go. Let's see if I can get my notes up here. Okay. Um many notes for April second, we gave our last ones on the nineteenth, okay. On March twentieth, I had the local public health meeting. And Lori is working to establish a once a month, she kind of calls it a reflective staff meeting. She had done some of these earlier with Diane. Uh they address staff concerns, ideas, share information. Sometimes they would bring in speakers, talking about some new programs or motivational. That's it sounded very good. Lori's doing a good job bringing the the department together now and transitioning in after Diane's retirement. This week, now April first through the seventh, is National Public Health Week. And Lori is posting an announcement every day. We should all be receiving some information uh each day, talking about various health issues and and promoting our public health department. She gave an update on COVID. It's very low in Meeker County, which that's wonderful. Influenza at the time was up a little bit, but kids are in school and and so on, so that that was understandable. RSV is down, that was good news. And in the state of Minnesota, there every now and then a measles case will pop up. But that's primarily among our unvaccinated population. Lori was very pleased to announce that public health is now fully staffed at this time, so she was tickled with that. And Chakuma, our new health educator, he gave a very informative presentation on suicide prevention. He talked about the funding that is coming to Meeker County, just did an excellent job, very nice presentation. Our work session on the twenty-sixth was canceled. And I am looking forward to an opportunity that has come my way. Uh they used to be the Business and Professional Women's Organization. Now I think they call themselves the the community a a community club or community organization. They've asked me to be their guest speaker on Monday now the eighth of April and talk about the responsibilities of county commissioners. So I'm I'm looking very much forward to that opportunity on Monday. And I believe that's my report.
Alright, thank you Julie.
Yes.
I had a uh Woodlands meeting last week and the uh last month looked really good in terms of the balance sheet. And we're trying to figure out uh wage uh studies in terms of uh people at Woodlands and uh I also have a one watershed, one plan Mississippi meeting this week. And that's about all I got there. Uh it's a further announcement that Boys and Girls County will be scheduled for two weeks from today. And um that's it. With that said, we adjourn.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Bet.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see you.